I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Mrs. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We don't have any presentations tonight, so Ms. Myers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates. First of all, in case you haven't heard, Dick Kimball with the Papillion Civil Service Commission has announced his retirement. He's served for the last 37 years. And so, bottom line is, he was influential in hiring our last five police chiefs, including Councilmember Steve Ingberg, and only two fire chiefs, because that's all we've had, as well as all other civil service employees which are police and fire. So, we'll be honoring Mr. Kimball at the September 17th City Council meeting with the proclamation and a small reception, or a reception for his years of service. And Carla Ru-Piper has agreed with your approval at the next meeting as well to serve on the Civil Service Commission to replace him. So, all good things. Also, I wanted to talk about that later on the agenda, you're going to be voting on the IAFF agreement between the city and the fire collective bargaining group. And I just want to thank Anthony Strawn, President of the organization, and his team for their cooperative approach in reaching an agreement. So, thank you for all you do to serve our communities. FOP update. The city and the FOP have reached a tentative agreement on terms of a new contract as well. The FOP needs to do a final review and a vote by their membership, but I anticipate approval and I would expect that agreement to be on the council agenda at the September 17th meeting for your consideration. And then lastly, a couple of update meetings. The LCRA meets this week, September 5th, and at 4:00 PM. I think a couple of you are on that committee. And then additionally, we're working to schedule a public safety meeting, and at this point it looks like we would do that September 17th before the council meeting, and we'll send out that notice. Additionally, we're looking to schedule an FNA committee meeting for October 1st. We want to ask Lori to provide a financial update on the Papillion Landing Project and look at additional improvements there. And then lastly, the Annexation Ad Hoc Committee. We're looking at potentially in October 15th, and I'll let those members know as we get closer to that date. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next is the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve consent? Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? I'll note for the record, the applicant for the special designated liquor is in the audience. Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 1852, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 205 Zoning Ordinance, Article 36, Having to Do with Off-Street Parking. The applicant is the city of Papillion. It's for the Off-Street Parking Regulations Ordinance Amendment. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item F1, Resolution R190155. It's a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class D liquor license for Western Oil II LLC doing business at Speedymart 2760. It's 100 West Centennial Road, Papillion, Nebraska 68046, and a manager application for Luke Moser. It is a public hearing. I'll call for any proponents. Is the applicant here? Okay, thank you. And if you'd state your name for the record.
John Dillsaver, 10709 South 168th Avenue. I'm with Speedymart. I'm here to answer any questions. We've operated that location for 20-plus years and have enjoyed our time at Papillion, so.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mumgarth.
I'm just going to tell you, I drive by there many times. I'm just going to tell you, thank you for the landscaping you've done there, the rocks. I know last year you put some extra effort in keeping the rocks there. Trees aren't doing too well. Maybe you can look into that, but I will tell you, thank you. The neighborhoods are very happy that that's been improved.
Okay. I know last, four years ago, when we had a transition in ownership, that that was one thing that was brought up, and I know our landlord has helped us with that.
Well, and then, you know, the rocks were falling into the street, and you went back and pulled them back out and did a lot of work, I think, last spring. So, thank you very much. It's working. Now, if you can keep the trees alive, that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any other, do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. I will get to Mr. Sunday. I'll do it under the council discussion. We'll bring him up. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190155? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Council discussion, Mr. Sunday. Could you go ahead and come on back up? Mr. Sunday?
Thank you. I'm just curious, do you know how many other service stations around town sell liquor and wine?
I don't have a specific number. It's, you know, we're one of the few that don't have liquor, and, you know, I know that, you know, most, I'd say every Casey's, Buc-E's, Quick Trip, all have liquor.
Okay.
So, we're adding liquor, is what we've asked for.
I would just, I guess, ask also, have you, your business, have you had any problems with underage sales and law enforcement getting involved with sting operations or otherwise?
I don't have a specific number on if there's been violations at that location. I know tobacco and liquor stings are done quite often, and sometimes, you know, certainly as a company, we take it very serious.
Okay.
You know, we train every new employee. Every new employee goes through alcohol training before they're on the register, also tobacco training. So, it's certainly something, you know, certainly with us being as close to the high school as we are, you know, we take it real serious in the community that we're in.
That's one of my concerns. I've seen at other stations, and I don't want to say which ones, but the single-shot liquor will be placed in like a basket right on the counter, right by the register. Seems to me it would be very easy for an underage person to just shoplift, access it that way. The last thing I want to be a part of is, you know, helping a teenager get liquor so that they can go out and harm themselves or someone else.
So, as a company, we never make those shooters, is what the term is referred to in the industry. We never make them available for the customer to have access to, to bring to us. It's something that our cashier has to transact, and that's where the training kicks in on, you know, carding and underage. So, we do have scanners that we've put in all of our stores also, so we're scanning driver's licenses, is what we require. You know, we're really asking them, anybody who looks younger than 35, that we ask our cashiers to card for alcohol or tobacco. So, there would not be any of those shooters available for anyone to grab. I can assure you of that, so.
Mr. Mumgarth. Mr. Sunday, can you turn your mic off? Thank you.
Okay, that raises a question of mine. Are you going to have single bottle or single can sales? Let's take beer, well, let's take beer, both beer and, oh, alcohol. Are you going to sell in small singles?
So, we currently have a liquor license, so what we're adding, I guess beer is, beer and wine is what we have. So, we're adding liquor.
Yeah, I guess I'd.
We certainly do sell single-serve cans currently, yes.
Well, I'll tell you that I have some experience with some stores in other cities that do that, and it turns into, they become the neighborhood refrigerator for vagrants and people to hang out and just stand around and drink it, then go back in, get another can and stuff.
Right.
I don't think you'll have that problem, but obviously, if that problem popped up, we'd be talking to you again.
Certainly.
Okay.
Yeah, we certainly don't want that either, that's all.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Next is Item F3, Resolution R190176, A Resolution to Approve the Professional Firefighters Association of Papillion Local Number 3767 Union Agreement. Did I miss one? I got ahead of myself. I apologize. Sorry, Anthony. I'm going to go backwards now. Item F2, Resolution R190167, This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve setting the 2019-2020 property request. It is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190167? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Klug. Any council discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes. Now, we'll jump to F3, Resolution R190176, A Resolution to Approve the Professional Firefighters Association of Papillion Local Number 3767 Union Agreement. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190176? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any proponents? Mr. Strawn? If you'd state your name for the record.
Anthony Strawn, 901 Kalrney. I just wanted to talk to you guys, let you know, our body voted to approve the contract August 21st. It was overwhelming vote. I'd like to thank Administrator Myers, Assistant Administrator Powers, Carrie Svetson, and Chief Bowes for their professionalism, patience with us. I know, at times, we can be very trying people to work with, but, I mean, we came up with an agreement that is fair to both the citizens of Papillion and our firefighters. So, I thank you for working so hard with that, and I hope you can vote yes for the contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Seen none? Any council discussion? Let me lead off just real quick, Anthony. Again, I want to thank you as well. Also, I want to recognize Tim Gosh, Chad Jeffers, and Josh Neville, who were on the negotiating team for the union. Also, again, I want to thank Ms. Myers. You mentioned fair to the workers and fair to the citizens, but I actually think it's fair to management as well. It was, I think it was very balanced, and I think everybody, while there may have been in the beginning far apart on some specific positions, I don't think anybody didn't distrust who was in the room, and I think that was a huge thing. We went into it with trust, and I think we left it with trust, and I don't think we could ask for anything more, and I think it was very fair. So, I want to thank everybody that was at the negotiating table for that. Took a little bit longer than usual, and some people might want to know why. I think the biggest thing is, it was almost all new players on both sides from previous negotiations. So, learning each other, why things were in the agreement, what was important to one, maybe the other one didn't realize that. So, there was a lot of learning that went on as well. So, I just want to thank everybody, from my perspective, for bringing it forward. Any council discussion? If not, please vote. Thank you again. Thank you for what you do. Item F4, Resolution R190181, A Resolution to Approve a Request for Private Water Supply Well and Geothermal Well System for the Proposed Elementary School in the Ashbury Hills Development in the vicinity of South 120th and Schramm Road. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190181? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F5, Resolution R190182, A Resolution to Authorize a Change in Health Insurance Carrier from Aetna to Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Nebraska. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190182? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilwoman Klug. Proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. F6, Resolution R190183, A Resolution to Approve a Change in Dental Insurance Carrier from Aetna Self-Funded to Emeritus Self-Funded. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190183? Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. F7, Ordinance 1850, An Ordinance to Amend the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Budget. That's the current year budget. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1850? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F8, Ordinance 1851, An Ordinance to Adopt the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Budget. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1851? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilwoman Klug. It's typical every year, there are a couple of motions. One, the first one is a motion to true-up the budget. In between the time that it's initially introduced, and we have the public hearing, we end up getting the actual certified values from the city, so there's a final rebalance that goes on. So, the first one is just a motion to approve an amendment proposed by staff. It's outlined on page 23 of the packet, so it was delivered for everybody to see and review. So, is there a motion to approve the amendment proposed by staff as outlined on page 23? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents on the motion to amend? Any opponents? Any council discussion on that one? Please vote on the motion to amend. Motion passes. The next motion to amend is the motion to approve a 1% increase to the lid, which is the Restricted Funds Authority. Again, we do this one every year. What it does is, it gives us flexibility in the budget to go 1% above the levy limit, and as far as I know, we've never used the authority, but it really is there for emergency purposes. Again, current context, think of all of a sudden, if we get a flood, and we have a high demand to meet that need, it gives us a little bit of reserve authority in the levy then to address that emergency need. That's usually, I think, probably the most logical time it would be used. We've never used it. The other reason we, it's, I believe it's good to increase it, is legislature's always looking at the levy, always wanting to restrict. If we don't approve it, we've self-limited ourselves, and then if the legislature could take it away, we didn't have anything. At least now, we've got something they would have to take away, so it gives, I think, some lobbying power at the legislature. But the real need, I think, is the emergency ability, tornado, floods, that type of thing. This does take a supermajority, so I'll call for the motion to approve the 1% increase to the lid, and if it gets a motion in a second, then we'll have to have a supermajority. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? If not, please vote. Again, we'll need six out of eight in order for it to pass. Mr. Sunday. Motion passes. So, now we have the original motion as amended twice, so we can have council discussion on the budget. I want to give a quick overview, mainly for the public who might be watching this. A lot of it's what was in the original budget letter that went out to the public. The newspapers reported on it, and it's been out there for about a month or so. But, at the highest level, it maintains the current mill levy, the 45 cents. There's always the valid discussion of valuations go up, so if you leave the levy the same, did you have an increase? If people look at our budget without understanding the full context, they would say, actually, we had a 30% increase in our certified valuation. But the important thing to remember is, 27% was related to the annexation and new construction, so you extrapolate that, really what we had of base valuation. It's always been there. It's about a 3% increase. Another thing to remember, in our current budget, about 14.6% of the general fund expenditures are funded by property tax. The rest is sales tax and the other items, so we're not highly dependent on the property tax. Of all of the cities in Douglas and Sarpy, we are the lowest levy. We've consistently been the lowest, and I think at least what I'm seeing from presented budgets, that'll continue to be the case. Sales tax revenue, we assumed a conservative 4.5% increase. We don't want to get too dependent on that, because that is very volatile. If one business decides to move or shift, that revenue could be gone overnight. We currently, our current sales tax revenue is about 11.5% above budget. One of the things we've done is, by going conservative on the budget planning, if it comes in above expectations, what that's doing is putting extra cash in the cash reserves. We true that up later in the process with the budget amendment, kind of like what we did tonight. Public safety is about 62% of the general fund, so police and fire. Personnel costs, no surprise, is our largest item in the budget. It's about 72%. Nearly, a couple of important things, though, in that 45-cent levy, we're starting to see a little bit of a shift. About nine cents of that levy moved to CIP, which means, a little bit more of the current levy is actually going to some of the long-term things, the road, the long-term road improvements, capital things. So, we're not deferring maintenance. We're actually speeding up and taking care of long-term maintenance. Part of that is the 2.2 million that's identified for the roads improvement. Again, historically, I'm going to guess, seven, eight years ago, our roads budget was about $250,000. Looking at Ms. Klug to validate, I think it's about five, four years ago, we doubled that to about a half a million. This budget's taken that to 2.2 million. One of the things that at least gave me confidence in that dramatic of an increase is the new roads management plan we put in last year's budget, where we actually funded the truck to drive up and give us real data to report from. Now, we've got data to work with of which roads need improved. So, that's the 2.2 million. The other important thing, I think, when you think of the property tax levy, is the bond portion of that was actually reduced by about three cents, and that three cents also shifted to capital improvement. So, we moved from debt to long-term investment, which is a good thing. And we've talked a long time about weaning away from debt. As the city was growing really fast, there was bonds that were issued, and so if you looked at our debt pervaluation, it was high some prior years, and we made a conscious choice to start weaning away from debt, paying as we go, using the cash reserves for things. There's a chart at your table, and we'll probably put it up on the website so the public has it, but it gives a history from 2011 to now on the debt pervaluation, and you can see a dramatic drop. The high was at about 3%. We're down at 1.64%, and it's been a dramatic drop the last five years, especially the last three. The one note is, it does exclude, that graph does exclude, the recreational bond, because that was voter-approved, and it's paid by sales tax, not by property tax. So, this is the, of all of our bonds that are property tax-funded, is what that is. So, we're down to 1.64%. So, that's kind of my introduction summary of the budget. Council discussion? Seen none? Please vote. Motion passes. Next is Item F9, Resolution R190177, A Resolution to Call General Fund Warrants Issued by SID 179 Eagle Crest. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190177? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? And again, I'll just note for the public, this is one of the SIDs that we annexed. SIDs don't have as favorable as a credit rating as the city, so their bonds actually were sitting out there at about 7%. This gives us the ability to either call those, which we're doing, or in some cases, you might see us doing agenda items where we'll actually refinance them, because we've got investment-grade ratings, so we can get a much favorable interest rate. Any council discussion? Mr. Stube?
Yeah, I just want to go through maybe a little discussion with regard to this. So, obviously, when staff goes through an evaluation for annexing areas, they look at the financials, and here's a situation where I'm making the assumption that the financials evaluation utilized the current interest rate that was on the warrants at that particular time. And so, in this particular situation, we're taking an area that we annexed and already seeing a reduction in cost to the city because of the advantage of those, of our credit rating that allows us to take a significant amount of money and go out, and I'm assuming it's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood, or probably half of that particular rate that was currently being paid. Question would be, is that this is just one SID. Do we anticipate others that will fall into the same category?
Ms. Myers? We do on the next agenda item, but in general, Ms. Myers.
Yeah, and in this situation, and actually the next agenda item, they are warrants, so they're not bonds yet, and warrants generally have a higher interest rate than a bond would, but regardless of that, the city is still responsible for paying out those warrants, and we would have taken that into consideration when we did our annexation analysis. I don't know that we've gotten to the point that we've looked at outstanding bonds with those two SIDs yet, but we will look for opportunities to refund at a lower rate if it exists.
Any other council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Related item, F10, Resolution R190178, A Resolution to Call General Fund Warrants Issued by SID 213 Walnut Creek Estates. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190178? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. No committees have met in the last couple of weeks. As a reminder, we will be calling, and I'd sent an email to everybody, we will be calling a public safety committee meeting. As Ms. Myers mentioned, it's anticipated that'll be at the next council meeting, and then an FNA committee meeting after that. Any comments from the floor? Any council comments? Mr. Stube?
Yes, so, a couple of weeks back, my colleague that represents Ward 4 and myself attended a dedication for Hunter's Park, and I just want to express my appreciation to Tony and Trenton and all the efforts that went into putting that particular situation together. Obviously, I've been a strong proponent of the mayor's grant program. That's one of the subdivisions that has definitely taken advantage of it, and it was a very nice turnout. I know, Mayor, you weren't able to make it because of a conflict, but Tom and I represented the city well, I think, at that particular location. So, again, I just want to thank Tony and his staff and Trenton for all the efforts they went through in that particular dedication.
And just, you made the note about that grant program. Just a reminder to council that we do have a grant program, a small one, and it's divvied up between the wards. So, if there is a project with a public benefit, and there's a civic group, a homeowners group or something doing a project, and they need a little of assistance, don't discount applying for that grant. It's helped on a number of projects, and that's being one of them. So, thank you for that reminder as well. Just a couple of comments from the last couple of weeks. Ms. Myers and I participated in the United Cities Conference Call. A lot of that is getting ready for the upcoming legislative session. So, if there's an item of interest that you specifically have that's legislative in nature, make sure we're aware of that, so we can be bringing that to the United Cities and working on those items. It's a short session, and it's the second one in the biennium. I think most of what you'll see down at the legislature is trying to figure out property tax relief, and there's an urban-rural split on that, and they've been working on that for, what, a couple, three years, and haven't got an answer yet. And then the other one is the Nebraska Advantage Program, the Tax Economic Development Incentive Package. That is set to sunset this next year, and so far, they haven't come to an agreement on a new package either, and if that doesn't get approved, we're probably the only state in the nation that does not have an economic development package. And I think what we're seeing is, because of the splits in the body, those two are getting tied together. Each group's kind of holding the other one hostage, and so there's a lot of negotiations going on at the legislative level to see, is there a package that can be put together that answers both? So, we're trying to stay close to that. I think the biggest impact to us is, we've always had a big issue with the state's ability to be transparent with sales tax. We've talked a lot about that. There is no transparency, and we have no ability to audit, which is why our sales tax is so volatile. And so, we're very active in those conversations to try to get transparency back so we can plan and budget. And then at the same time, whatever's going on with property tax discussions has a direct impact on us as well. So, I think that's most of what you'll see at the legislature, but if there are things of interest, make sure we're aware so we can be working on
of interest, make sure we're aware so we can be working on those. We, there was a couple of ribbon cuttings that we've had, and then the Papillion 150 Planning Committee is still active. So, if you're on a civic group that's not involved in the 150, or you yourself want to be involved, maybe reach out to Laura Swartz at the foundation. She's kind of taken the active lead on the larger steering committee and getting the community together on that planning activity, but there's a lot of active planning going on, and they are looking for people to be involved. And then we also had a Sarpy County Sewer Wastewater Agency meeting. I think the big item that's being discussed there, and I think you'll be getting more information in the next two to three weeks, so you can be more informed of some of the assumptions that are being made, is where is the treatment plant go for the first phases? And how do some of the fees we receive for development south of the ridgeline, how does that get contributed to the agency to help fund some of that initial infrastructure? So, you'll be getting more information on that in the next couple of weeks, so as we're making assumptions at the agency, we can make sure we're representing the council appropriately on those. I think that's most of what happened the last couple of weeks. Any other comments from council? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.